Good evening. Thank you. As the Board and Administration make their way to the day, it is just time for the regular meeting of the Howell Township Board of Education. Roll call of the Board. Mr. Girman, present. Dr. Jeffrey, here. Dr. Lowe.
Present.
Mrs. Malley will be absent tonight. Mrs. Mangano is going to be late this evening.
Be late.
Mrs. Okerson.
Present.
Mr. Thor.
Hello.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Bonjavani. Aquarum is present. Please rise to salute the flag and then remain standing as we are granted a rendition of the National Anthem by second graders from Gribbling, Ms. Jenna Quara, and Ms. Sophia Sisto.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hail At the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Were the leopards we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's crackler The bomb bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star spangle that nay yet wave More the lullin' of the free And the home of the brave?
Mr. Bonjavani and Mr. Miller have something for you.
Thank you, very good. Thank you, great job.
Great job, ladies. Was it fun?
Yeah.
You like doing it?
Yeah.
Uh, what grade now? Third grade?
Um, second.
Second grade. So are you, are you...
No.
So, do you... So you're gonna be singing before us at school now, in some...
Um...
You did a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Announcement by the President as read by the Secretary. Adequate notices to this meeting as required by Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 were distributed by the Secretary on May 16th. It is now time for the balance of our recognitions. Mr. Isola, Superintendent of Schools, recognition, sir.
That was pretty awesome. So, welcome everyone. Always a, always an exciting time when our board and our community takes the opportunity to recognize our staff and our students, which we'll be doing both this evening with great excitement. The first thing we'd like to do is honor three of our retirees. Apparently, the date we wanted to do it conflicted with their big potty, so we shifted our date here so that we can honor our friends who are retiring from Greenville School and have been an awesome part of this school district. And to assist with us and lead the honoring and the presentation will be Ms. Lynn Coco, our principal at Greenville School. Ms. Coco, come on up.
First of all, I just want to thank Mr. Isola for allowing us to do this evening. I certainly did not want to have our Greenville staff miss this opportunity to be recognized. So first, we'd like to call up Mrs. Whitaker. Mr. Augustin from HDEA is joining us as well. Okay. Yep, you can clap. So after having completed leave positions, Mrs. Whitaker accepted a tenure track position nineteen years ago at Ramtown. Her first position was staying home with her two sons, who continue to be her proudest accomplishments. Mrs. Whitaker has taught first and second grades and in recent years has been in kindergarten. And it has been wonderful to see Mrs. Whitaker grow in her teaching practices. Bubbly and animated, her students were so excited to see her return this year after a leave, a short leave that she had. And although not very long, it felt like months to her students. Through the years, Mrs. Whitaker and I have had our moments of playing lighthearted jokes on one another. Her students always call me out when I try to hide and jump out at her, and now I will have to find a new playmate. On behalf of the Greenville community, I wish Mrs. Whitaker a wonderful retirement where now she can spend more days on the beach and more visits with her sons. And this goes for all retirees. Everybody knows I'm a quote person. However, the trouble with retirement is that you never get a day off. And that's from Abe Lemmons. So congratulations, Mrs. Whitaker. It is okay. It is okay. I, at our leadership meetings, whenever somebody from our leadership team retires, I'm the first to go, "Woo-hoo!" And although Mr. Isola maybe not always enjoys when one of us leaves, I certainly wish anybody who has the opportunity to retire when they can, you take that opportunity and enjoy it after so many years of hard work. So congratulations, Mrs. Whitaker.
And absolutely, congratulations and long, happy, healthy retirement, doing exactly what it is that you want. But on behalf of the school district, the Board of Education, and the HDEA, a memorial brick will be placed in our garden. We have a brick for each of our retirees. There's two gardens. There's one at Middle School South, and there's one right here at Middle School North. Your choice. Declare it now, though.
North.
North, you got that?
My son's went here.
North, that's right, that's right. So this brick in Beth's Honor will be placed right out here. And in addition to that, Mr. Bonjavani will present you with a replica.
This is a smaller one for desk weight or whatever, so congratulations.
We're throwing out something, no.
Thank you.
All the best.
You have to come take a picture, come. Yes, you. Next, Mrs. Jody Belcher. We'll have Mr. Sanisacco first.
I wasn't prepared because when I asked who the retirees were, they told me some lady named Gloria was retiring. I didn't know who that was. So Jody has been a dedicated supporter of our schools, the one she's in, though. So she has been taking care of Greenville for a long time. She's been taking care of the people assigned to Greenville for a long time. Some of them don't want to say how they were taken care of, but she always was dedicated and made sure that the babies were safe and healthy in the buildings. And we will miss her very badly, whether it's Jody or Gloria. But she, she has been a wonderful asset as the head custodian, and she has always exemplified a high, high, high standard for the school and for herself. So thank you.
The minute we, we were told we had to write a blurb, I wrote it up that day, so I've been prepared. Mrs. Belcher began her time in Howell in the food service department, working at Taunton School, and that's where I first met Jody. When Greenville opened in September 2003, she became the day head and has been there ever since. Mrs. Belcher is known for her meticulous expectations for cleanliness and getting the job done well. I thank Mrs. Belcher for being proactive and making me aware of the little things before they become a big problem. Mrs. Belcher and her husband Roger met here in the district and have enjoyed their years of camping and being outdoors. An avid dog lover, in recent years, Mrs. Belcher's yard has become the home to many deer, where they walk up to her and eat out of the palm of her hand. On behalf of Greenville School, I wish Mrs. Belcher relaxing, enjoying days in retirement with Roger, her daughters, and her grandchildren. So thank you very much, Jody. Okay, and our last recognition for tonight is Mrs. Terry Bruder. So having over thirty years' teaching experience, Mrs. Bruder is ending a wonderful career still loving what she does, each day. In the time I have known her, Mrs. Bruder has taught first through third grades. She began her career in Carney where she was a Teacher of the Year, and after moving to Toms Ververs began at Taunton before coming to Greenville when it opened. And when Terry, I don't have this in my speech, but I remember when Terry came to Taunton and she asked not to have desks in her classroom but tables, and people were questioning and so forth like that, and I was very intrigued to see what she was going to be doing. And from that moment, I always knew Terry to be a teacher who had initiative, new ideas, and she always implemented them because her students always came first. So I will always remember when Terry first came to Taunton School. Mrs. Bruder greets her students each morning at the door, and she is known for creating medleys to help her students remember phonics rules, math procedures, and other subject-specific facts. She also attended many after-school activities on campus and off to support her students' interest. In addition, throughout the year, Mrs. Bruder came to PTO meetings to personally thank the members for the support of her role and our students. On behalf of Greenville School, I wish Mrs. Bruder retirement where at 6:00 PM, she is at a dinner table in a restaurant and not at her desk. May she and her husband continue to take cross-country trips in their RV and enjoy college games. I also know she is looking forward to spending valuable time with her children. So congratulations, Terry. Thank you so much.
That's not that other one, congratulations.
Okay. Now, congratulations to all three of our retirees this evening, and next month we'll have another group of staff members out here to honor. And I just think that it's so important that we get to take this opportunity to public meeting to thank the outstanding individuals that make our school district really a special place. So to our three retirees tonight, all the best, congratulations, and thank you for your service. With that being said, we'll transition to the student portion of our recognition program, and we will start with our Law Day Essay and Poster Contest, and our presenter will be Mr. Harvey, our Vice Principal and Social Studies Supervisor.
And I've asked Mr. Miller and Mr. Thor to join.
The Monmouth Vintage, in partnership with the Monmouth County Bar Association, held its annual Law Day Ceremony on Wednesday, May 1st. This year, Law Day celebrated the importance of the rule of law in our society. This year's Law Day theme was Free Speech, Free Press, Free Society. The ceremony began at 4:00 PM in the historic General Equity Room, courtroom of the Hall of Records in Freehold Borough. Assignment Judge Lisa P. Thornton presided over the ceremony. Judge Thornton presented plaques to the student winners of the Law Day 2019 Essay and Art Contest. We are proud to announce that this year's winners of the art contest were, first place, Michael Monikas, Ramtown School. Third place, Carol Abdemalik, Ramtown School. Winner of the essay contest, third place, Lar Nagy, Howell Middle School South.
The next award is for Student Government Day. I would ask that Dr. Henning and Mr. Farley, please join me.
And Dr. Lowe and Mr. Girman are going to join.
Howell Township Student Government Day was held on Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, at the Howell Township Municipal Building. Students were able to meet with local and state-elected officials in order to learn more about the branches of government. Students also were provided an opportunity to learn more about the services offered through local, county, and state agencies. The seventh-grade middle school students participated in an essay contest entitled, "If I Were Mayor, These Are The Things I Would Do To Boost Civic Engagement To Get Students Involved In Government And Public Service." Forty-five students were selected based on their response to the essay to participate in Student Government Day. And the top six ranked students were selected to represent the Howell Township Mayor, Town Council, and Township Clerk at the Town Council Meeting the evening of May 21st, 2019. These six students were here to, are here tonight in order to be recognized for representing Howell Township Public Schools at this year's Student Government Day. I'd like to honor right now Cassidy Brennan, who was mayor. Will Daley, council member. Emma Martins, Township Clerk. Kay Shovner, council member. Samantha Ngo, council member. And Caitlin Zito, Township Council Member. Great job last night.
At this time, I'll ask Dr. Henning and Mr. Farley to remain up as we will recognize this year's Student Achievers.
Student Achiever is a very prestigious award given to what's recognized as the top student on the team. There are about a hundred students on a team, so just to get this far, to be recognized as your team's student achiever, there's about a 1% chance that these students stand in some pretty exemplary company. They all have speaking roles at the graduation. So I have two students that are here tonight that I believe. Kelly Sullivan, is Kelly here? There she is. Kelly is, let me just say that Kelly's an extraordinary lady. She has the ability to focus and dedicate herself to her studies while being kind and compassionate to her peers. In each subject area, Kelly has demonstrated her unending hard work and has been a role model for other students. She's a well-rounded young lady who is goal-oriented and aims high in all she does, and we are proud to have her as our Team 3 Student Achiever. All right, my Team 2 Student Achiever, I also saw him up there, Lidl Arakal. All right, Lidl was, Lidl was chosen as a Student Achiever because he epitomizes what it means to be a great student. He is intelligent, hard-working, thoughtful, and wise beyond his years. He is also kind and well-respected by his classmates. He not only excels in his classes, but he has been actively involved in many activities and organizations, both outside and within the school community. He is a great all-around student, and we are proud to have him as our Team 8-2 Student Achiever. My overall Student Achiever was Connor Moran, and I don't believe Connor is here tonight. Right. Wanted to be sure.
As Dr. Henning said, this is a very prestigious award. We have four teams here at Howell Middle School North, and I'm going to recognize our Team 8-1 Student Achiever first. That's Dora Gibbons. Dora? Dora's an incredibly well-rounded person. She has many interests. She's been a straight A student during her time here at middle school. She's on the Executive Board, a member of our Student Council. She's been involved with the basketball and track teams. One of the truly notable things about Dora is her devotion to the community. One example was that she sent over 1,300 letters and care packages to soldiers in Afghanistan, and an American flag was flown in her honor at Bagram Airfield in Afghanistan on September 11th. She's an amazing student, and I know she'll do great in high school. Congratulations. Our Team 8-2 student, who's being recognized as our Student Achiever, is Ava Pettigrew. Ava, please come up. Ava is a wonderful and impressive student. She's been a bright star in every class, not only in her desire to be successful, but her drive to improve. She gives nothing short of her best, and that is reflective in her high school academic achievement status throughout her middle school years. This drive does stem from her passion for figure skating and ice dancing, and she spends countless hours in the rink, putting time in to be her best, and she does the same thing in the classroom. She's always willing to offer a helping hand, and her passion for helping others has transferred outside of school as well, where she organizes charity events and helps at the local skate club. In short, she's an excellent student with a bright future, and I know she'll make Howell Middle School North proud as she heads off to high school. And Team 8-4 Student Achiever is Anushka Gupta. Anushka? As are all the students standing in front of you. Anushka's an amazing student. She's an active learner who asks higher-level questions and shows initiative and creativity. She's willing to accept challenges and goes above and beyond with every task thrown at her. She's a leader who has excellent collaborative skills, and her love for learning shows in the classroom. She not only enjoys learning the concepts presented to her, but thrives on taking those topics to the next level. I think Anushka's going to be going to High Tech, and I'm sure you'll do great things there, so congratulations. And finally, the overall Student Achiever will live our class address at this year's graduation, and that is Rowena Kanayan. Rowena is a mature, diligent student with a natural intellectual curiosity. In addition to her academic excellence, Rowena excels in extracurricular activities. She has served in the Executive Board of the very successful TSO Program, TSA Program here at North. At the recent TSA competition in Trenton, I had the pleasure of watching Rowena get up again and again to receive an award. She did a great job there. She plays multiple instruments in the band. She's taken responsibility to serve and accompany us in the chorus, and I know she's going to do great things in high school and beyond. I'd like to congratulate Rowena. Good job. Before we recognize our next group, as we recognize these students, I'd just like to take a moment... to take a moment to thank all the teachers that are behind their accomplishments. The teachers here at Howell Middle School North, Howell Middle School South, and all of our elementary schools do an amazing job preparing these students for success, and I would like to recognize the teachers for these students' accomplishments. All the students that competed from Newberry Middle School North in the GETS Academic Bowl, if you could just make your way down, why don't you come on down and stand right over here on my left or your right? Okay, so the Newberry students and the Middle School North students that participate in the Academic Bowl, come on down.
Bon Jevani, yes, who? Ms. Mangano and Mrs. Oakson, great.
I just talked about the amazing teachers, and three of those amazing teachers supported these students at the GETS Academic Bowl, and they'll be speaking to you in just a second, but that's Ms. Jackie Higginson, Ms. Lisa Oliver, and Ms. Kristen Rowley. We thank them for their support. It's my pleasure to announce the following Project Plus and Goal teams that received awards at the 2019 Academic Bowl. The competition was held on April 10th at the GETS Middle School in Jackson. Over 20 schools from the Shore area competed, and these are two of the top teams standing in front of you. I'd now like to bring up our teachers so they can recognize these fine students.
All right, so our seventh graders at North, very professional and great sportsmanship shown at the Academic Bowl would make North very proud. They took home first place. So we have Lucas Bavaro. We have Sam Potenciano. Julian Sanchez. And then, not here tonight, Sarim Memen, Alina Abrahamson, and Nico Calendra.
I'm very happy and proud to introduce my Academic Bowl team. We took fourth place. Oliver Conapac. Priti Palomera. Siddharth Shankar. Luciano Torano. And two that aren't here, Brody Kaplan and Jack Wetco. Great job.
No handshake, no certificate. New rule.
Said I had them all set up over there for the picture.
Exactly. So... And that concludes our recognitions this evening, sir. Thank you.
Before we have a chance to break for a few minutes and let you go home, I really want to put- I think it's a two-way street. We've had retirees here tonight. Thank you so much for your service over the years. You've just added so much to this district. We have a number of staff members here tonight. Thank you so much for helping these children reach the levels they've reached. But I also really want to thank the students too for your efforts in terms of challenging your teachers all the time to be the best they can. I don't think that they pick up a book and just say, "Okay, here's how they do it." I mean, I know some of the staff members, and they're encouraged by what they see happen in the class and the opportunity to say, "I've got to come up with something new today. I've got to find a way to challenge." So, two-way street. Thank you to the staff, thank you to the students, thank you to the parents for sharing your students with us. That's it. It is now, the board is in need of an executive session. Please note the motion printed in the agenda. The items this evening will be the HIB report, a settlement agreement, a personnel interview, update on food service, and negotiations for transportation shared services. With your permission, sir, may we have a mover and seconder for the board to go into executive session?
Move.
The board is in executive session. We'll return for business after that. As the board administration take their places at the day, as the board will be back in session. May we take the minutes? Okay, I'll get one tomorrow. Can we take the minutes, please?
Please.
Mover and seconder on the minutes? Moved by Mrs. Oakson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. May I take that around?
Please.
Mrs. Oakson? Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Gurman?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dr. Lowe? Mrs. Mangano? Mr. Thor? Thor is- minutes, sir? Abstain? Thank you. Mr. Bon Jevani?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. Seven votes in favor, with the abstention noted for the record. The correspondence the board has received will be noted for the record. After discussion with the president, we are going to change the order of the day. We're going to move to the first public comment, and then the consent agenda, and then continue with reports. With your permission, sir, may I open the first public comment?
Please.
Whereas the Howell Township Board of Education terms of comments from the public may last 45 minutes and will be conducted in accordance with Bylaw 164.1, the officer would respect the time in the courtroom. Will be the president of the board, Mr. Bon Jevani. May the floor be opened?
Please.
Are there comments at this time? Seeing none, may the floor be closed.
Close it.
May we take the consent agenda, sir? And I will read in A1 and A2?
Please do.
A1 will be, from executive session, approved shared service agreement with Freehold Burr to provide transportation services beginning September 1, 2019. Authorize the board president to execute that agreement subsequent to each board council finalizing the document draft. A2 will be approved the transfer of Dorothea Fernandez, Supervisor of Special Education, to the position of Director of Pupil Services at a salary of $161,000 even, prorated effective August 1, 2019, replacing Mrs. Patricia Callender on her wonderful retirement. With that, may we have a mover and seconder on the consent agenda, plus the A1 and A2, sir?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Miller. I heard two voices, I don't know which one it was. Who seconded? Mr. Thor? Thank you. May I take that around?
Please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Gurman?
Yes, except I abstain on A2 and on the following 2000-7, 3000-13, 3000-14, 3000-15, 3000-16.
Thank you. Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano? Mrs. Oakson? Mr. Bon Jevani?
Yes, except I accuse myself on 2007, 3013, 3014, 3015, 3016, 3020, and A2.
Thank you. The consent agenda and the addenda items are approved. Eight votes in favor, none opposed, with the abstentions noted for the record.
Mr. Sanisak?
Yes.
I just want to take a moment to congratulate Mrs. Fernandez on her appointment this evening.
Thank you. Moving back, it is now time for the board president and superintendent's comments. The board president, Mr. Bon Jevani, your comments, sir? I have a couple tonight. We've been made aware that the township had already made mention of this, so just for the record, we have been having conversation with the township governing body in regards to moving our administrative offices to their global building. No final decisions have been made yet. At this time, it's strictly conversation. Strategic planning, as the public knows, we did the strategic planning some time ago. Some of the action plans have already been set in place and are being worked on, but Kathy Weincoff, our Field Service Rep from New Jersey School Boards, will be here on June 12th to introduce the actual plan and all the pieces to it to both the board and to the public, and I know that an invitation will be going out to the members of the public who were involved in that, so looking forward to that. I have attended a number of different things recently, and I'm not going to mention all of them, but I do want to mention a couple, along with Mr. Miller and some other people. Some of us attended the New Jersey School Board's Special Ed Conference a few weeks ago. It was called Special Ed, although they touched on a lot of different things. They touched on wellness issues, they touched on SEL, the crisis management. There were a lot of pieces to it. One of the programs that we heard a lot about at that particular program was Dylan's Wingman Program. It was started by the father of one of the victims of Sandy Hook. This program has taken hold in it, and it's become fairly popular throughout the country. New Jersey School Boards has joined in with this program, and through their ELF funding is doing some training on it. Because of the conversation that we've had, and I've spoken to Mr. Miller about it, I know that one of the districts that has taken this as a district-wide program is Edison. And Mr. Izola, I'd like to talk to you about it, that maybe using your contact, or maybe I should reach out to the board president, but Mr. Miller and I would both like to at least make some type of visit to them, not so much to adopt it for this district, but to find out exactly how it's working for them, what they've seen out of it, so that's something that we have talked about. Mrs. Mangano and I have had a couple of conversations about a program that she's familiar with, Mallory's Army. And one of the things that she found on their website was that Mallory's Army will come into districts and do a program. I know recently they were in Colts Neck, I believe they were someplace else local recently. There are- sometimes funding can come out of police stations, although we don't really know that, so one of the things I'd like to do is invite Mrs. Mangano, that she and I should have a conversation sometime next week into exploring that a little bit more about the possibility of some type of program being offered. I'm not necessarily sure that it comes from the board, but I'd still like to see what's entailed and how that might move forward. Another program we attended was a legislative symposium. A number of us from the board were there. There were some really good speakers, there were some great panel discussions. Certainly to nobody's surprise, main topics were funding, extraordinary care costs. It was just a very good program. It was nice to see that a number of the representatives, even though they were in session that day, stopped by to at least offer their support, say that they were aware of it, and we'll see what happens from there. Today, Mr. Izola, Mr. Miller, myself, Mr. Sanisak, and Mr. Gurman attended a meeting with Assemblyman Thompson from our district. We gave him a report on a couple- I'll call it a white paper for lack of a better word, a couple of different topics that we think are key to this district and throughout the state. He had a very, very busy day. He gave us a half hour. I think we have to be happy that we got at least that time, but I'm sure there will be conversation, follow-up between Mr. Sanisak and his office. And I really want to thank Mr. Sanisak and the whole Legislative Advocacy Committee for the fine work they were doing in terms of preparing for this. Had an opportunity today to stop by Hellmania, to see 175 students there having an incredible time and just smiling and enjoying themselves, and the number of staff members who were there, but it was just, it's really a wonderful program, and I encourage anybody if they ever have the opportunity to be able to attend that, to stop by. It's pretty impressive. One of the other things that happened recently was the commissioner was here more than once visiting our schools. Commissioner Rapalay was here a couple of times, and when he was talking at the one school, when he was talking at, I think it was Ramtown at the time, he was talking to the students, but I took the moment to ask him, from the department's view, and being a board of education, not the administration, not the teachers, but from a board's point of view, if he had a message for the board, what he would like to see us continue to work on or to try to focus on. So this is a very short clip, but if it's ready, I'd like to just play a really short clip. Thank you, Mr. Izola. This is the board president's comments? Thank you.
I think that's how we come from a standard organization to an organization that's progressive, responsive, adaptive. And I say that because that's the work we're doing in public education. work we're doing in Department of Education. We're talking about a new paradigm shift, and how we prepare the future through commissioners' ways, and some ways of practitioner. I understand what we go through in the trenches. And it's our job, I say, to make sure that we have a policy we put in place, making sure that the ripple effect is sweet, that doesn't have an adverse effect. So continue doing what you're doing. I'm very pleased to have the work that you're doing based on my relationship with General Superintendent, and I have found how, so you guys are on the right track, you are on the right track. Just keep them in, just to ensure you support those individuals.
I'd like to thank Ramtown School for providing us with that film that they took that day. Couple of the words that we heard in that talk, innovators, risk takers, failing forward, innovators, going the extra. I'd like to believe that all of those are pieces that we see in this district every day. For us here on the board, part of it also is accountability, to make sure we are holding ourselves accountable, make sure we're holding administration accountable. And I appreciate the fact that you share so much data with us often, so that we do have a pretty clear idea of what's happening in the schools. And that's certainly helpful. I'm going to finish up, Jennifer, with a...
I didn't say it.
I know you didn't. I'm going to finish up with one last piece. And this is really something that, there was a board member from Rumsen, and I'm going back probably 20 years ago. She then ended up being on the State Board, Bobby Vananda. And Bobby, at the time, had a habit, she wouldn't let a board meeting end without asking her fellow board members, what did we do for the kids today? I probably sat in this seat for a long, long time and have been thinking about saying that out loud here. But I want to put it on all of your minds that as we go through the rest of this meeting, and as we go through other meetings in the future, we should probably be looking at everything we do in terms of what is it that we're doing for the students that day? What impact have we made? And with that, I'll finish up.
It's now time for the Superintendent comments. Your comments, Mr. Isola, Superintendent of Schools.
That's great. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bonjovani. And I think the answer to that question is quite clear each and every time we assemble. You know, you talked about your visit to the bowling alley earlier, and what we did for kids in that opportunity in Howl Mania Bowling Day, and when we recognize our students here and our staff. I think what this board provides opportunities for kids each day is something for you to take great pride. And so I encourage you to ask that question each day, but I also hope that our board can reflect on the positive work that's happening. And it's because of the partnership that you all foster. So thanks for that. Just a real, two items. Just first and foremost, I'd like to also offer my congratulations to Doty Fernandez, who will be our new Director of Pupil Services, some really big shoes to fill. What size, Patty? Really some big shoes to fill. And, you know, it's hard to go, we always use the Yankees, it's hard to go to center field and play center field for the New York Yankees after Mickey Mantle retires, right? So Doty's got some challenging standards to be compared to, but I know that she's ready for that challenge. And I certainly know that she is aligned with the direction as Superintendent that I see for this district. And I'm excited to welcome her into the Senior Cabinet in the coming months, as we, you know, transition and celebrate Mrs. Callender's departure and celebrate Mrs. Fernandez's arrival in her new role. So I'd like to thank the board for their support on that this evening. It is one of the most important things we do as a board in supporting the Superintendent in putting the pieces of the puzzle together and then holding him accountable for such actions. So I'm excited about that. And I think we're going to continue to build on the greatness that we know exists here and hopefully move it to the next level, because we are certainly in position to do that. The second thing I'd like, two combined items, I'd like to share with the board that I was recently named to the Executive Committee of the Monmouth County Superintendent's Round Tables. So I'll be serving in this upcoming year in the role of Secretary. Good luck with that, but that's what they asked me to do. So I'm really proud and honored to be viewed by my peers as someone who could help the county roundtable. And I know Dr. Lowe has experience in that room. And hopefully I can help move some of the work on the county level. And to that point, I think I've shared with many of you already, but for the public record, we are serving point due to the passion that we have for mental wellness. And I've asked permission from the Executive County Superintendent and the Executive Board if we could put together a countywide mental wellness symposium in this upcoming fall. And that was greeted with, you know, absolute support from the county office and the county roundtable. So we have started to put the pieces of that in place. We have named a steering committee. We have approximately 20 districts, I think it's 19 districts represented from the county on that steering committee. We'll be meeting June 6th here in Howell Township, you know, and I'll be chairing that work. While I am probably going to be the least knowledgeable person in the room, I hope I'll be the most passionate and driven person to bring that to be. One of the things that I recognized, and it was through my work on the School Board, New Jersey School Board's Task Force for Mental Health, from some of my partner superintendents in other counties, in Mercer County, what they were struggling getting messages and educational programs on this topic to their community as individual districts. There's only nine districts in Mercer County. So they did a countywide night for the nine districts. I said, you know, that's an awesome, that's an awesome effort on their part. And then I said, you know, how powerful if we can pull 60, 59 districts in Monmouth together and have a room of four or 500 parents and professionals educating each other and sharing in the work that is so important. So we'll be going on an absolute marketing campaign with this and making sure that every community in Monmouth County understands that this night will be available to them. We're going to look to bring in some really fantastic keynote folks, as well as breakout sessions. And we'll be formulating that starting on the 6th as the steering committee. I did not, I only have one person from each district that volunteered to be on the steering committee of the 59, I think it's 59 districts. We have commitment already from approximately 44 of those districts. So we're in really good shape. I think it's going to be a great night for our county. And, you know, I sit with you all the time and talk about Howell being perceived as a leader, and this is just another example of our team's commitment to important work. And I hope that the board supports this and that you all be present if you're available. Once we select the date and a location, it has to be a big enough venue. So I don't believe it will be hosted here in Howell, maybe next door, but not in our buildings, so that we can have enough, you know, facilities that can fit hopefully, hopefully a big crowd. Some real quick topics that we're looking at is obviously substance issues, you know, the mindful work within schools, de-stigmatizing mental illness, and that whole gamut of topics goes on and on and on. And we just think that it's, I was overwhelmed by the support from my county partners. So more to come on that. Just want to make sure the board was aware that we're spearheading that, as that work is absolutely something that I am unwavering on. And we're going to move the needle somehow, trust me.
Mr. Isola?
Yes.
Just on behalf of the board.
This is the Superintendent's report.
I feel, I feel comfortable in saying this on behalf of the board. We know the passion you have to that. We think it's going to be a great program. We're really looking, I'm looking forward to hearing, seeing that program come off. I think you're going to do a great job with it. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you so much, sir. And that concludes our report tonight.
Thank you. It's now time for the Committee and Liaison Reports and Updates, sir.
Nothing.
Pardon me?
I'm going to start off first, Mrs. Mallory's Operations Committee Report. The Operations Committee met on May 15th, 2019. Of course, Mr. Sanisak reported that all the voting polls have been moved out of the schools, and the polling maps with the new locations were handed out to the committee. And they will be printed in color and will be hung on the doors and placed on our website. Reminder announcements via school messenger will be sent out closer to the primary voting dates. Our Dena's chiller was up and running for three days and then switched back to heat due to colder temperatures. System is in manual mode at this time. When controls are complete, the system will be placed in automatic mode. At that time, the system would automatically switch from heat to cool and then back depending on the temperatures. Univents for all schools are due in July 15th. Middle School South's chiller will be on time. Middle School North will be cut over in October. LED lighting is 95% complete in the district, building and ground, and the equipment building are being done as of recently, so I expect them to be done by now. And will be complete by the end of the week, which should have been done. A few of the buildings still have some areas that need to be completed, such as Newbury Gym, which wasn't completed. And all the buildings will be brighter and safer at night. Solar panels and ground mounts are on all the schools, and they are up and running and producing electricity. Kiosks were installed at the schools, but they're not online yet. Networking is to be completed by OIT. For transportation, focusing on route inefficiency for the fall implementing Versitran. The goals are going to be decreased time for all full-size bus routes, increased percentage of capacity, for capacity for full-size buses, less vans, more full-size buses, reduce use of vans for non-mandated purposes, increase students on employee-driven routes, highest and best use of specialized equipment, reduce contracted route costs. Efficiency strategies, reduce frequency of stops, increase the number of students per stop, increase walk distance to stops, reduce vehicle total distance travel, eliminate all cul-de-sac pickup and drop-offs, eliminate house stops, those that are not IEP mandated. There is no state rules for no sidewalk or curb routes. IEP-based stops are almost all vans at this time. Reduce crossover routes and circular travel, and identify policy revisions, the goals and strategies. Revamp Glenn Arden routes, stop at mouth of each cul-de-sac, buses cannot turn around on cul-de-sacs with on-street parking and on garbage days, walking further to stops. Elementary children by law can walk up to two miles. Combining stops can save minutes off of bus times. Also, we'll work towards sustainable New Jersey credits, walking to stops for exercise. Review hazardous routes policy for new development. The April 10th Operations Committee meeting minutes were approved. Ms. Mallory and I attended the New Jersey School Board Association Delegate Assembly on May 18th. The new state officers were installed. There are President Michael McClure, Vice President of Activities Bruce Young, Vice President for Finance Tameisha Smith, Vice President for Legislation Karen Cortila. Updates to their bylaws were approved by the delegates in regards to how their committees function. The only resolution that was submitted was by Wermuth Board of Ed. In short, it was that the New Jersey School Board Association would advocate an fair, equitable, and adequate allotment of state aid based upon the most recent enrollment in financial data, including adjustments to ensure full funding under the statutory formula, but that no school district and no student should experience hardship as a result of reductions or adjustments in state funding. However, this resolution was defeated by the delegates by 63 to 37%. And my finance report. The Finance Committee has not met since our last meeting. We are meeting on June 3rd at 7:00 PM in the Board Office to go over our insurance renewals. On May 11th, I attended the New Jersey School Board Association Legislative Committee. On May 13th, I attended the Special Education Symposium where Ayaana Hockley of Dylan's Wings of Change spoke, like Mr. Bonjovani spoke about. Yesterday, I spent the day with some students from Middle School South and Middle School North. At the Student Government Day, the students did an extra job representing their classes in the district all day. And at night, they returned and ran their own council meeting. Of course, they did an excellent job running the council over there. This morning, I attended the meeting with Assemblyman Thompson, and we went over the Path to Progress Report that could possibly affect our district. And then I attended Howl Mania Bowling. All the students seemed to be having a blast while they were bowling. I was really impressed on the interaction between our staff and the students. You could see how far our staff goes above and beyond for our students. Please share my thank you with all of them for their hard work. Last, but certainly not least, I want to wish everyone a safe and happy Memorial Day weekend at the end of this month. Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions?
Hey, buddy?
Mr. Sanisak?
If I can just put an exclamation point on one part of the operations today, the Ardina system was turned on. It'll be on, it's running. So since 1936, this is the first day that, well, 38 it opened, it started being built in 36, just to be clear. No, I know.
Ron was there the first day?
Yes. I was shoveling for the footings. So it was under climate control in the full building. So just, today was the day. Yep.
It's 38 on the picture, but it had to be built first.
Yeah, but they wouldn't have made it before.
Can you talk to Mr. Bonjovani?
Anybody have any questions about the two reports we heard from? Mr. Miller? Dr. Lowe?
The Education, I'm sorry. The Education Committee met on Monday, May 20th. We spent a good chunk of our time talking about our CEP, which is the Comprehensive Equity Plan. It is something that's updated every three years. It's a state mandate, but overall, it manages and supports improvement in our equity practices. So there are affirmative action team must be established and to meet and address the needs assessment document. So district policies reviewed by administration and the affirmative action team. We are in compliance with all needs assessment indicators, self-determined growth corrective action plan, and celebrations of excellence. Corrective action documents identifies areas of and also if we are compliant. Compliance is noted in both the needs assessment and corrective action documents. Strategic Plan Action Goals, those areas learner success and talent teams correlate directly with certain sections of the needs assessment and are noted within the corrective action plan. Discussion ensued regarding diversity in staffing needs and specific examples of policies and outreach practices. So we did spend a good chunk of our times reviewing the Strategic Action Plan, as Mr. Bonjovani talked, will be shared with the team, meaning the full community team, on June 12th. And so in those areas, under Strategic Plan Goals and Learner Success and Talent Team. So we did a good review of it. Action Plan Goals were developed to reinforce the areas of the Strategic Plan and the correlation of the goals, areas, and needs assessments of the SEP tied together to assist with growth plans that are in noted in the CEP plans. We did make sure, as we always do, that accomplishments will have the data backup, as we're data-driven. You see the organizational chart that's listed on the agenda. It's just really information. In August, that chart will reflect the change from Assistant Superintendent of People Personnel Services to Director of People Services. And also the job description the committee approved. And overall, that was it. It was always a very good meeting. Minutes from the March 18th Education Committee were approved. And so our next meeting is June 10th, I believe.
I'd like to make a comment on the meeting. I did attend, and as always, I think that meeting, that there's just so many wonderful topics that are touched on. I thought the conversation in terms of the diversity in the staff and how we could look towards that, some of the target areas and stuff, that was just, it was a great, it was really a great conversation. And I also want to point out something else that Dr. Lowe does, and I haven't seen it at every meeting, I don't attend every meeting, but just, you know, compliment her. At the end of the meeting, each time, she will make a point of going back and looking at our own at our own district goals and, okay, what did we talk about in this meeting today and how does it relate back to district goals? And I really want to compliment you on the way you do that, and I would encourage anybody who's chairing a committee to think about doing that. Thank you very much. Mr. Thor?
Thank you, Mr. Bon Jevani. The Community Interaction Meeting, our committee, met last night. It was at Town Hall. It was set up to immediately follow Student Government Day. Student Government Day ran over a little bit, so ended up being, we didn't have as much of a turnout as we had anticipated, but the idea in theory, I think, was pretty good. And it's something I think we're going to try to emulate next year if at all possible. Couple major updates that we had yesterday, and obviously the most important one was on the budget. Mr. Isola reviewed the district budget that was approved at the May 6th meeting, and he discussed a little bit more intimately the decision of our board to use half of our bank cap available rather than the full amount, and that was explained. District calendar was reviewed real quickly. We had a discussion regarding, you know, the mental health wellness countywide symposium and Mr. Isola's desire to see that become more of a topic that we stress in the coming year, you know, the mental health and well-being of both students and staff. Mr. Gurman is always at our meetings, which we appreciate because we believe that the Legislative Advocacy Committee, a lot of the topics that they're dealing with have direct kind of overlap with our committee. So we appreciate the fact that he's there and able to explain some of the legislation that we are focusing on as a district. So again, Mr. Gurman, thank you again for always being with us at the meetings when you're able to be there. Citizen member Ms. Tarby had a nice idea, which ties into an idea I'm going to present at a future meeting regarding mentorship, mentorship plan that I have, and I want something I want to present later this summer, perhaps at our retreat. But she said that her community, Equestria, is very interested in volunteer opportunities within the school, so that's something that we absolutely want to try to embrace. There's a lot of folks in that community that are either still working in some very interesting fields, some of them are recently retired, and they can be a great attribute, I think, to the district. I think we, as a whole, are going to look for any opportunity to involve them. Which actually ironically goes into our next point that as we continue to try to move the meetings around town to try to gauge more and more interest, and also, you know, you don't want to be in the same spot all the time. I think as a community interact, interaction committee, it's in our best interest to, how's a pretty big town? Let's try to continue to move it around. We are going to, the last week of June will be our next meeting tentatively, and we're going to try to do it actually in the Equestria Clubhouse. I reached out this morning to the leadership, and I'm going to try to come up with a common date that works for them with their schedules and with our committee. And hopefully the last week of June will be the week that we have it up in the Equestria Clubhouse will be open to the public, and then the next meeting after that will be in August. Any questions at all?
Yeah, Mr. Thor, just two things. One, I'm glad you mentioned you've already reached out to Equestria because I will tell you that a couple of years ago when we did a meeting at Equestria, it was not an easy situation having something at a gated community. So if we can get their cooperation in terms of running that, that'd be great. And just a real quick comment, the other piece you mentioned about the mentorship program, it ties in with something. Mr. Miller and I have been at so many different meetings where we've heard conversations about this, especially from New Jersey School Boards, has been pushing the non-college-bound learner. You know, that might be a program that could be developed, you know, in overtime if we continue to have conversation, you know, people with different skills. I mean, it could be, it could be a chef, you know, coming in and talking about what are the possibilities of that, an electrician. I mean, there are just so many different people out there with different skills. So that might be something that, you know, we can certainly have conversation with Mr. Isola and see if that might be something that is appropriate and can be worked in somehow into our.
That's what I'm envisioning, and it's something I definitely wanted for us as a board to kind of revisit as we get into the summer months where we have a little bit more time to have this dialogue. But absolutely, I mean, what a great way to engage our community, then with something that they're passionate about, that some of our students may be passionate about, that can help them down the line, gain some perspective as they move along in their educational journeys.
Great. Anybody else with any comments about that meeting? Who was there? Mr. Isola?
Yeah, so to that point, and I think we shared this last night, I believe, Mr. Thor, the good news is that it's something that the Community Interaction Subcommittee of Strategic Plan built into their goals and objectives. So that work is going to be embedded into the strategic plan that we'll be seeing on the 12th of June, I believe it is.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Gurman?
The Policy Committee has not met since the last board meeting and doesn't have any scheduled date for any future meeting at the moment. Turning to Legislative Advocacy, again, Mr. Bon Jevani talked about our meeting this morning with Assemblyman Thompson, and he referred to the excellent white paper, shall we say, that Mr. Sanisak helped prepare, which reflects so much of where we want to go. So we have two major areas that we have focused on at the moment. One, we've talked about at the board level a couple of times, and that's the point about the concept of having one K-12 district as opposed to what we now have, our K-8, and then a regional high school district. And again, we've made the point, and this is what we talked to Assemblyman Thompson about, that it's working rather well now. And we went into some of the details from the administrative point of view, which we're not going to go into here, but the white paper goes into it, again, for efficiency, for economies, having a 35,000 or 40,000 school-sized school district does not lead to that. Moreover, it doesn't necessarily lead to good or educational attainments either with articulation. And we've talked about the strengths we have now with the present system we have. So we focused on that. And the second area that we focused on through the committee to reflect the feeling of the board is in the area of special education and funding. So just briefly, as we've met last, two nights ago on Monday, and things happened very rapidly in Trenton, obviously Senator Sweeney with his Path to Progress Work Group spent months putting together their report. It had members from both the Assembly and the Senate, had members from both sides of the aisle, and now Senator, Senator President announced a 27 bill package. We haven't seen all of those bills yet, so that's something we're going to follow. But what we do know is that some of it is contradictory, and understandably so. And I don't really want to go into the details because we don't really know where they want to go. Some bills, seemingly with just a synopsis, we don't have them all, talk about better coordination between K-8 and high school districts, have regular meetings for articulation. Other bills talk about perhaps going to the point of setting up K-12 districts simply. When we were in Trenton at the Wall Memorial at the program sponsored by school boards and the State PTA Association, we heard one legislator talk about consolidation of districts of 500 students and under. So again, that's to be worked out. Again, without, again, we have Mr. Bon Jevani, Mr. Miller, Ms. Malley, who work and see this on a regular basis, what's going on in Trenton. The expectation now is between now and June 30th, they have to put together a budget. The emphasis will probably be put on the issue of pensions, that's in the report, and maybe on health policies, and so that's what we'll be watching. But meanwhile, we're going as a committee to start looking at those bills. And again, what we want to do is we met with Mr. Thompson, he and Assemblyman Thompson, he and Assemblyman Keen share an office, and they work together with Senator Singer. So we want to continue that dialogue, and that is ongoing, as Mr. Bon Jevani pointed out. We also, for instance, at the meeting in Trenton, Mr. Sanisak had a chance to say hello to Senator Gopal, who's from our district, not our district, but a neighboring district. But we have a natural connection there because he has, represents some of the towns that feed into the regional district. Moreover, he has put some of the special education bills in. So what we really want to do is get into the weeds when that comes. And so what we really want to do, and just to finish this report up, is to continue to reach out to, first of all, our own legislators, and legislators who have bills in, in the area of special education and in the consolidation area. Particularly in special education, there's some sense that perhaps there may be some room in the budget for more funding on the state level for special ed. And that's certainly one of the areas we want to try to, you know, speak for. So again, just to add one more point, Mr. Thor, with the Community Interaction, at our last couple of meetings, the thought's been proposed that perhaps there'd be more connection between the two committees, and that if particular issues come up that are of interest to the general community, we can maybe continue to make a larger advocacy group on particular topics if it's appropriate. So that's a great connection.
And I think what I'm going to start doing now, because we have this relationship and because of really the fact that these committees really do kind of have that overlap, is I'm going to try to then return the favor and come to as many legislative meetings as possible.
Mr. Sanisak, I'd like to add to something that Mr. Gurman said. In regards to the paper you did, it was really excellent in terms of it, it made everything very clear, it laid it out, it was good arguments, and what I would ask you to do is, some of us have seen it, but maybe you could make sure that all of the members of the board receive a copy so that they have an understanding of it. And Mr. Gurman, the other thing I wanted to point out is that sometimes, sometimes boards get lucky. And I consider us very lucky to have you on this board because you talk their language. I mean, you know, it's just, we've been in meetings where it's been obvious that because of your experience in Trenton, you get it. You can decipher it to the rest of us. So thank you so much for all of your efforts on that. And I guess that wraps up committee reports.
Yes, we need to open the second public comment with your permission, sir.
Sure.
Whereas the Howl Township Board of Education determines that comments from the public may last 45 minutes and be conducted within, in accordance with its bylaw 164.1. Officer with respect to time in the quorum will be the president, Mr. Bon Jevani. May the floor be opened?
Sure.
Are there any comments at this time? Seeing none? May the floor be closed?
Yes, and before we gavel this meeting closed, I know you heard it from other people, but Mrs. Fernandez, congratulations. We're looking forward to great, great things. I don't know that we can end tonight because Mrs. Malley isn't here to make the motion.
She just texted me.
Second. She just texted Mr. Miller. She made a motion.
Is she watching us on live stream?
Yeah, she just said, "Good report I gave for..."
The board is adjourned.